So join me in the flag. Attention, position, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item one, consider approval of the consent agenda.
May we adopt?
Commissioner Harrod moved to adopt a consent agenda. Second by Commissioner Bouchon. Is there any discussion? Call a question. Motion carries seven. Item two, citizens' participation. If you have, would like to address the commission, come forward to the podium, tell us who you are, sign in, and speak your piece.
You know, Holly can't stand. I'm always up here. Thank you. So I just wanted to let you all know that last Friday was third Friday downtown Shawnee, and I wanted to thank the city manager's office for being really, really helpful, for helping us close the street for just a few hours just in our block. We partnered with Community Renewal and the block leaders, and we had the party wagon come down. It's a trailer with a barbecue grill and a tent and tables and chairs, and we sat it up, and block leaders came out and we grilled vegetables, and they handed them out and talked about how awesome it is to be a block leader with Community Renewal. So we did bubbles and had live music, and it was right smack in the middle of Main Street, Shawnee, Oklahoma. So it was great. So the next opportunity will be on the third Friday in September, come on down to Main Street and see what's happening in our town.
What time of the day does this happen?
About six to, eh, about nine o'clock.
Is there a football game that night?
You know, maybe. There was now, I will say, there was a Thunder game on a couple of months ago at the same time, and one of our friends brought down his flat-screen TV, and we plugged it in, and by golly, the football, or the basketball game was on, for those who were interested in making sure they didn't miss anything.
Thank you.
So that may happen.
You get an attaboy.
Thanks.
Item three, presentation by the city manager to employee of the month, Ashley Beon, Utility Billing Customer Service Department. I hope I pronounced your name correctly.
Thank you. Ashley, please come forward. My pleasure to introduce to the commission tonight, Ashley Beon. Ashley began working for the Water Department in March 2016 as the billing clerk. Over that time, she has shown that her customer service skills are second to none. Recently, a customer showed up with a pie for the department, actually. I did not get a piece either. It seems the customer accidentally mailed stamps along with her water bill, and someone, that being Ashley, had mailed the stamps right back to the rightful owner. She is not only dependable, but has a sharp memory with accounts and customers, proving to be a positive asset to the city. When she's not at work, Ashley enjoys spending her spare time with family and taking care of her chickens and ducks. She is married, and they also have one son who is four. Ashley, thank you for your contributions.
Ashley, they're trying to get, there you go. She also gets an attaboy. You know, that's the kind of thing that used to get in Starology when we had Starology and the Shawnee News Star.
You're going back a long way.
We have a proclamation for Blueprint's graduate. Tiffany?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
We've got a city, or a citizen's proclamation. We just didn't get a chance to call up. Sorry. Thank you.
I apologize if I spelled that.
Not necessary.
Hi, my name is Brooklyn Benjamin, and I, along with my business partner Jacob Crouch, own Scissor Tail Skydiving that operates out at the Shawnee Regional Airport.
Would you sign in for us?
I sure will do that.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. In case you guys don't know much about us, we are in our fourth year of operation here in Oklahoma. I was originally, I have a skydiving business out in Tennessee, and four years ago, we started looking to expand here into Oklahoma, and settled on Shawnee because of the distance to the city, the airport and the options for hangar space there, and just the people in the community. We were really excited by the small-town feel that we found here. In the four years that we've been in operation, we have successfully thrown 4,580 people out of a perfectly good airplane and landed them all safely back on the ground. We have also during that time given, or spent about $90,000 at the airport, both in a hangar lease and facility lease and fuel sales. We thoroughly enjoy the community here and the city. We've been warmly received by every business owner, community member, you know, we have random people that show up at the airport just to watch us jump. And they're like, you know, we absolutely love to see the parachutes in the sky, and we think it's so fun that you're here in our city. You know, these people, when they come in to jump, they're not only jumping out of the airplane and it's coming to our business, they come and make a day out of it. They're going to the local restaurants to eat lunch. They are, if the weather gets bad, they're spending the night so that they can jump the next day at a hotel. They're going to the shops and the mall and Walmart and all of that kind of stuff. While we have been very happy with the city and the reception that we've received from the community here, we have had difficulty with the airport itself, and that is the reason that I'm coming to you guys tonight is just to make you aware of the situation and ask that maybe you take a little bit of time to help us continue our safe operation and the success of our business, which also contributes to the success of the airport and the city as a whole. During our times, we have, my business partner has had degrading, demeaning comments made to him in front of others regarding his role and his position. He's been called a, an airport bum or a skydiving bum, when in fact, he is a business owner that's contributing vastly to the economy there at that airport. We have difficulties getting the grass mowed in our landing area, and I don't know how much you know about skydiving, but a nice level surface of mowed grass is very important for the safety of our jumpers. If those jumpers are coming in and they can't gauge the depth of the grass or what's underneath that grass, we can easily have broken bones or twisted ankles or something like that, and it is quite challenging to have the landing area mowed, which is a part of our lease agreement. You know, I have lots of documentation here. I don't know how much detail you would like me to go into, but I would just ask you guys, you know, A, come skydive with us, come see our operation, we'd love to have you, and B, any assistance that you guys could provide or that kind of thing, we would greatly appreciate.
I'm aware of your issues, and it's inexcusable that there would be any demeaning comments in either direction, but at this point, we view this as a management issue, and we would like for you all to sit down with airport management and city management and see if you can work this out. If it rises to the level that this commission needs to consider it, then we will, but we'd like for you to try to work it out first and appreciate your comments, and we want you to be treated fairly, and my wife tried to get me to do that, but I outsmart her and went to the golf course.
I'll make it my goal.
But I bet the flat landing area is a big deal.
Absolutely.
I know you're bringing a lot of people in, and we hear about it, and they enjoy the sport.
Absolutely. Well, I'll tell you, it took us eight years, but I finally got the mayor at our, in our town in Tennessee to do it. I'll keep trying.
You may get the vice mayor to do it, or the ex-mayor, but...
Nice.
You're welcome to try, but...
I will keep trying.
Don't spend a lot of calories.
What we'll do is we'll make it a fundraiser, so we'll do something.
It better raise lots of funds.
We'll do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'm sorry to have skipped.
Hello, Mr. Mayor. My name's Jacob Crouch, I'll sign in here.
You don't wear a tie when you jump out of airplanes, do you?
No, I do not.
Me neither.
Again, I really enjoy being here. Not in the current circumstances that I'm, that I'm here talking to you guys, but the city of Shawnee has been really good to me. Part of the miscommunication that started our relationship with the airport is Enterprise Rent-A-Car. When we first made an agreement with Mr. English to take space in Hangar 13, he made both of us believe that Enterprise would not be in that space as well.
Let me interrupt you. I've asked that you all get together and see if you can work all this out, so...
Okay.
I really don't particularly care at this point about any of the details.
Well, I'm going to explain to you how I have tried to, I'm just going to explain how I've gone about my process.
I'm going to give it another try.
This is for you to make a comment, but commissioners and the mayor particularly aren't really allowed by law to gauge any questions and answers.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just going to make a comment then. All right. So during that process, it took a year to get Enterprise out of the hangar. After that, they were driving their vehicles past my aircraft and past the operation area. To get the, to get the results I needed, I actually had to call the FAA and have the FISDO come down and the airport, and this is after I went to the airport board meeting and asked for their help, and they said they would help me and nothing happened. That's why we're here now. The airport manager, Mr. English, told the FISDO that we were being non-compliant, and I've never received a letter from Keenan saying we were non-compliant, not officially. I do have an email asking for us not to park in front of the hangar door, and that's about it. I don't like the stress level that's there, I would like it to be better, but the reason we're here is because we have tried to talk to the airport management. We will do that again.
Mr. Erickson is going to meet with you as well.
Okay. But again, we like being here, we would like to stay here, but with the current conditions that we're getting treated, it doesn't feel like the city wants us here, even though all of you say you do, because of the airport management. And thank you for your time, ladies and gentlemen, and please come out and skydive with us, even if you're scared, it's supposed to be scary.
I'm not scared, I'm just smarter.
But thank you. Thank you, sir.
Anyone else? Okay, now item four, Blueprint's Graduate Day. Tiffany Walker, if you've joined your...
Hi.
Blueprint's Graduate Day. Whereas poverty can and does affect entire families in any community, and whereas the organization known as Blueprint focuses on giving back in order to build a better community for everyone through educational events that provide basic necessities to families while educating them on local resources available in the community, and whereas the graduates of Blueprint's drafting success dedicate themselves to this program by offering hope in the place of hopelessness, resources to those who are struggling, recognition for a job well done, and whereas individuals and organizations consistently and unselfishly donate their time, resources, skills, and talents to ensure that the barriers that have existed in the past are no longer present, giving each person in our thriving community the opportunity to have a future worth living for, and whereas the purpose of Blueprint's Graduate Day is to inspire others to come together in order to build a better community for everyone, and now therefore be it resolved that this commission hereby honors all graduates of the Blueprint's Drafting Success Program for their hard work, community involvement, and personal achievements. May the years to come be filled with continued success and achievement for all the Blueprint's graduates. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Sure.
Can I just have my graduates stand briefly? Just a minute. On behalf of Blueprint, I would like to say thank you to the city of Shawnee for recognizing our graduates for their hard work. These graduates have shown dedication and drive to accomplishing their goals, but more importantly, our graduates demonstrate that no matter the circumstances, no matter where you are from, and no matter your background, you can be successful, but also have the powerful ability to make a positive impact on our community. We encourage everyone to assist in our overall goal of building bridges for a better community for everyone, and I'm so proud of y'all.
Item four, consideration of a resolution designating the city of Shawnee Commission Chambers as a Bertha Ann Young Commission Chambers.
Mr. Mayor, we might be able to do this resolution a little different than typical. We do have some family members here, this is for Ann Young, and Ms. Young did pass away on Saturday, eighty-nine years old, with fifty-one years of service to the city of Shawnee, so I might suggest read, read the title and vote, and then you could come down and present it to the family.
Is there a motion?
Move by Commissioner Salter, second by everyone.
Is there any discussion? Call a question.
Mr. Mayor, I'll read the resolution title. The resolution designating the city of Shawnee City Commission Chambers as Bertha Ann Young City Commission Chambers.
Call a question.
I have several.
Resolution designating the city of Shawnee City Commission Chambers as Bertha Ann Young City Commission Chambers. Whereas Bertha Ann Young commenced her employment with the city of Shawnee on August ninth, nineteen forty-eight, and has served the city and its inhabitants, starting with entry-level clerk and progressing through the years as assistant cashier, deputy city clerk, acting city clerk, and finally in December of nineteen seventy, she was appointed by the mayor and the board of city commissioners to become city treasurer on January first, nineteen seventy-one. And whereas Bertha Ann Young dedicated herself to the betterment of this community and demonstrated a genuine love for Shawnee by serving its inhabitants in an unselfish and loyal manner, and elected to retire on August thirty-first, nineteen ninety-nine, and whereas Bertha Ann Young served on the Oklahoma Municipal Retirement Board of Trustees from nineteen seventy-eight through two thousand seventeen, and assisted with making important decisions for the many employees of municipalities throughout the state of Oklahoma. And whereas Bertha Ann Young served at different times as president of the Oklahoma Municipal Treasurers Association, the Governmental Finance Officers Association of Oklahoma, and the Oklahoma Municipal Clerks, Treasurers, and Finance Officials. And whereas it is both fitting and proper for this governing body to officially name the city commission chambers in her honor for her distinguished service to the city and its inhabitants. Whereas the mayor and city commissioners of the city of Shawnee wish to thank Bertha Ann Young and honor her for her service to the city of Shawnee and to the community. Now therefore be it resolved by the major, by the mayor and city commissioners of the city of Shawnee that the mayor and city commissioners on behalf of the citizens of Shawnee express gratitude to Bertha Ann Young for her dedicated service to the city of Shawnee. The city commission chambers of the city of Shawnee shall hereafter be called the Bertha Ann Young City Commission Chambers. Would the family please join? We will miss you. Item six, consideration of a resolution of support for safe routes to school.
Mr. Mayor, commission members, this resolution of support is on your agenda for consideration. This is part of our ongoing efforts with Blue Zones, this was at their request. I will say the city definitely supports safe routes to schools, we have applied or received funding previously, we look forward to applying additional state funding to make safe connections to schools in the future as well. So staff does recommend approval of this resolution. We'd have to answer any questions.
Is there any discussion?
Do we actually have a list of safe routes for school systems?
No, ma'am, we don't. We do not.
Is that something we will be looking at doing?
Yes, I think as part of our, we have four years left with our Avidis partnership, and in addition, there may be other grant opportunities we can pursue, so absolutely, I think our, in fact, some of the improvements that have just been made over the last month or so have been to get those safer routes to school. If you've driven along Center Street and Independence, you'll see that sidewalk work going on right now, and then sidewalks were replaced on Wallace to provide safe access to that elementary school. So, yes, ma'am, we do need, we do need to do a better job of identifying those.
Our first one that we did was safe routes to school was from the apartments north back to the middle school.
Yes, sir. That was about three or four years ago.
I move we adopt the resolution.
Motion by Commissioner Harrod. Second. By Commissioner Rutherford.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution of support for safe routes to school.
That's it? I thought there was, I thought there sure was going to be more. Kind of like jumping out of an airplane. Punch us up so we can vote. Motion carries seven oh. Item seven, consideration of resolution supporting Potawatomi County Food Policy Council.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, this is another item that was requested by Blue Zones. This one is, has a little more detail. It establishes the Potawatomi County Food Policy Council, and is a resolution of support for that council, actually, and it also designates them as Shawnee's Official Food Advisory Council. It, as part of that council, there's, the details are in the resolution regarding the council's purpose, as well as the membership and their terms. One member is appointed by, by city government. This does not appoint that member at this time, so that would be a future action at another meeting where you would appoint your representative to this council. There are members of Blue Zones staff and volunteers here to answer any, any more questions that you have about this if I, if I don't know the answer, so any questions?
I didn't notice any menus on there.
No, sir, no, no menu at this time.
I had noticed in part of this language, and I can't pull this up on my system here, but it did indicate that there would be like some grant planning and policy development and this action, who would that come before? This council or this, the city commission, or how will that function?
Yes, ma'am, I think it would function similar to like the planning commission, where this body would, would...
Make recommendations.
Make recommendations, devise policy, but then any, of course, any official adoption for, for, that would be enforced or administered by the city would require your review and approval.
This would be along the line of what I read recently about the need for farmers' markets for produce is a big, big problem, to have special amounts of cost prices people can afford, so I appreciate that.
This policy is not unique to Shawnee. It's a, it's a county-wide thing, and as such, we have no jurisdiction over this council. What we're discussing is an endorsement of the council's actions. They will be approaching other cities within the county and other jurisdictions, I presume, Rachel, right?
That's correct.
Is there any further discussion?
So, I guess I didn't understand that, because I just heard two different things, I believe. One was that this council would, with their recommendations, come before the city with those recommendations if they had to do with the city of Shawnee, but you're saying that they will not, so educate.
No, they will come before us, but this is not a matter of our passing a, an ordinance, so to speak, it's an endorsement of their policy. If, when it's fully implemented from the policy council, that if we approve of it, then we would endorse it. It's not something that's got any teeth.
Okay, so it is something that will come here, that we will still recognize.
But our jurisdiction is not exclusive.
Right, because it's a countywide, there may be things that come out of this body that don't require your review or approval, but certainly anything that's going to, that's going to deal with city ordinances, regulations, city commitments in terms of financing or other, other public use for farmers' markets, or whatever it may be, then absolutely it will come back to you.
So these things are enumerated, the needs that we have pretty much recognized, and in recognition of what's being put in place to attack those problems.
And you said this is already a recognized council? Are those individuals here, any of those on the council?
Rachel, would you like to...
Good evening, council. Rachel Milo, and I am the Director of the Blue Zones Project, and Jason Draper, title?
I work at St. Anthony Hospital, Director of Food Service.
And Jason's actually on one of the committees that is forming this food council. I just returned from Minneapolis, which is considered a city very progressive in their, in their food policy and adoption and connectivity from the farmers and growers really to the consumer and restaurants, grocers, et cetera. And this policy council is generally considered kind of a first step to looking at your county's resources, needs, and, and looking at them in a more holistic way. The state of Oklahoma actually had a food council for about five years that they used to, to start several programs, and then it was dissolved. That could very well happen to this particular council. It's at a place where we have a lot of supply or we have a lot of demand, but there's this Grand Canyon between them of connecting the dots, and so this council will look at, at that, among many other things, as a way to, to think about our food environment for the county as a whole. And to the, the mayor's point, we're asking that every government within our county actually adopt and support the council as an advisory role, so that if, if it crosses borders, if you will, from out of town to in-town and et cetera, that we really have joint support and effort, and we have several people from a lot of different areas. We have farmers, growers, grocers, et cetera, that, that are represented in this idea being presented to you.
I guess my hesitancy on this isn't for the fact that you're going to do work, and a lot of it, it sounds like, here for the city of Shawnee, and I certainly appreciate that. It's just that the language that I saw within this resolution appeared to me that you were going to be developing policy and doing some grant actions that included the city of Shawnee's name on it, and my concern is when policy is written, the city of Shawnee should be able to see that.
Yes, we, we have no authority to write policy, we only have the authority to present policy ideas to the city.
Okay, all right, thank you, I sure appreciate it.
I move we adopt the regulation supporting the Potawatomi County Food Policy Council.
Second. Commissioner Harrod, second, please, the second. Commissioner Shaw. Call a question?
Your Honor, you have another one. The resolution supporting the Potawatomi County Food Policy Council.
I just called one at the same time.
I do that every time. Call second. Motion carries seven oh. Item eight, presentation regarding twenty-fifth anniversary of the International Finals Youth Rodeo by Chairman of the Shawnee Civic and Cultural Development Authority. Rodeo by Chairman of the Shawnee Civic and Cultural Development Authority.
Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for allowing us to come this evening. We were very excited this past July. We had the 25th version, silver anniversary for the International Finals Youth Rodeo. The event began in 1993 here in Shawnee. It is, it is an event that is the brainchild of a former director at the Expo, Ken Etchison. You know, with the goal to have an event that would bring people from all over the United States and hopefully foreign countries into Shawnee. And this event has certainly done that. This past summer, we had almost 900 contestants come from, they were in 1,500 events. There were 11 performances. It lasted from Sunday evening to Friday evening. The 30, I believe, Chris, there were 34 states. We had contestants from Australia here. We have in the past had contestants from three different Canadian provinces. So truly, we have an international finals youth rodeo held in Shawnee, Oklahoma. We would like to, as a partner with the city of Shawnee, we'd like to present the mayor and the commission a 25-year commemorative plaque that we'd like to be, wait a minute, mayor, if you would. We'd like to get a picture of all of you, maybe, because, because we have this plaque that we'd like to be, asked to be hung in City Hall to, you know, to kinda show our partnership. And then also, we have a picture taken with a drone. Ed Bolt took that for us on Tuesday night, which was Pink Night. Kinda shows a little bit of the size and scope of the event held at the Expo. That was taken about 8:00 in the evening. It was a little, it was warm that evening, so by 9:00, those stands were full. But we, you know, we've got about two-thirds of the stands full. So, also have with me tonight trustee Carl Packwood, trustee Rachel Milo, and the manager at the Expo, Chris Dunlap. So we'd like to ask maybe if you guys would stand and stand back there and we'd come up in front of you and
Come on.
Maybe have a photo taken. And, and then also, city manager Dustin Erickson is part of our trustee board as well. So we'd like for him to be in the picture.
You want to gather in close.
It's like you like each other.
Thank you all very much. If the public doesn't know this, this is our event. When we first started this rodeo, it wasn't me, because it was, it was another group. We had rodeo that we brought here from somewhere else and they took it away from us. And Etchison's idea was, well, we'll solve that. We'll just start our own. So this is an event that's born and raised here in Shawnee. We own it, and it's gonna come back as long as we treat these people right. They do an unbelievable job out there. If y'all have never been out there, you need to go.
I think Chris ran some numbers this past summer. Chris, there were, somewhere in the last 25 years, there have been somewhere over 24,000 something contestants that have been through the gates of the Expo. You know, you know, these are high school rodeo athletes, so you times that by four, times they have a parent, a grandparent, and siblings. So that's, you know, I mean, that's well over 100,000 people that have been just for the one event. So.
What about the volunteers?
Oh my gosh. You know, we can't say enough at the Expo Center about the volunteers. We have almost 500 volunteers that, and this past year, we recognized, we had about 14 volunteers that have been for all 25 years. We have between 400 and 500 volunteers every year. People that take their vacation, people that bring their families. They, you know, I mean, we have such an outpouring of support for this event. And you guys are certainly our partners at the Expo, and we appreciate you. So.
That started the second year that I was on city commission before. So I remember the beginnings of that and how tough it was to get it going. But even at that point in time, we saw a remarkable movement from the community as well to get it, and move in motion. So as sure have a long ways.
Thank you, Randy.
Thank you.
Item nine, public hearing and consideration of an ordinance closing the right-of-way of a tract of land in the west half of the west half of the southwest quarter of Section Five, Township 10 North, Range 4 East, beginning at the northwest corner of Lot 10 of Harrison Park Edition, fence west 35 feet, fence south 147.5 feet, fence east 35 feet, fence north 147.5 feet, to the point of beginning. Applicant Greg Brown, Halm.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. This request comes forth today from a Mr. John Shepherd, property owner adjacent to this particular piece of right-of-way. The general location here would be north of MacArthur on Harrison Street, there on 35th, which is just south of where Van's pig stand is at. The request for closure is really to accommodate a building permit that was just approved for Mr. Shepherd's lot. He's requesting additional 35 feet of right-of-way closed in order to add additional parking to this particular space. This right-of-way is not only city right-of-way, it's also state right-of-way. And for a little background, it's a bit unique in this particular area. There's about an 800-feet stretch of right-of-way going north to south, where there's an additional 50-foot along the east side. So it's quite substantial on the east side of Harrison that we have this right-of-way. The city itself has no public lines in this little stretch, about 35 feet wide by about 140 feet. So there's really no objection from city staff. We have, by state statute, notified all franchise holders for this particular easement. We heard back from two in particular, so Vive and OG&E, basically with the concern that by closing this right-of-way, they will no longer be able to maintain the equipment that they have within these easements. And I contacted both personally and reassured them that again, by not only state statute, but by city ordinance, by closing this right-of-way rather than vacating, the city can always reopen this easement, this right-of-way. And all of these perpetual easements exist and stay and remain. So by closing it, that never changes. The, each one of these franchise holders still have every right to repair, maintain, move, and access their equipment.
Staff recommendation to approve?
Staff does recommend approving and certainly has no objection. We, we had one of our engineering staff members go out and survey this particular piece of property just to be double sure we didn't have water lines, storm sewer lines, anything in there. So even if we do close this today, they still, in order to do this parking law, would have to have an agreement with ODOT, the Department of Transportation, in order to use that land. So not only the right to use it, but also them as being the owners of that particular land would have to approve it as well. But yes, staff, staff has no objection. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Is there any budgetary impact to this? I heard you say the city did have some, a particular interest in it out there.
Sure. We, so it's by plat, it was dedicated to the city, a portion of this right-of-way. Without having easements in there and closing, there's no issue that the city has. Vacating, on the other hand, would be really getting rid of, rid of that from the city to that property owner, which is not the case quite yet. That'll, if that were to come to fruition, the city would get notified and have its chance to object, along with any adjacent property owners as well.
So OG&E and Vive, actually their lines are on that south edge of the property. I think they'll take over behind the property on the south.
That's what I understand. Yes, sir.
Well, I went out and looked at it Sunday, and that's what it looks like to me. It's on the south edge of the property there.
I need to declare the public hearing open. If there is someone here who is in favor, would like to speak in favor of the proposition?
My name's Carl Packwood. I think most of you know me. I just think that if there's a way that this can be worked out to where this property can be used for the purpose that he's asking for, we've got a person, local person wanting to spend dollars in Shawnee to improve property. He could spend it anywhere he wants to spend it. He chooses to, he's bought several properties in Shawnee, and he wants to buy, and he wants to utilize another spot. So I think that's a, that's a good reason to really look and make sure that, you know, if this can be used, it can be used for the purpose he's asking.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else? Is there anyone present that would like to speak in opposition to the proposal? Is there a motion?
We approve that, we're done.
Commissioner Harris, move approved.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rutherford.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance closing the right-of-way of a tract of land in the west half of the west half of the southwest quarter of Section Five, Township 10 North, Range 4 East, beginning at the northwest corner of Lot 10 of the Harrison Park Edition, fence west 35 feet, then south 147.5 feet, fence east 35 feet, then north 147.5 feet, to the point of beginning, to the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma, according to the recorded plat thereof, specifically describing said street, preserving the right to reopen said street, preserving utilities, and declaring an emergency.
Call a question. Motion carries six ayes, one abstention.
Why would?
Is there a motion on the emergency clause? Commissioner Harris, second.
Second.
Commissioner Rutherford, call a question. Motion carries six ayes, one nay. Item 10, discussion and consideration of approval of a resolution to approve potential amendment of the city's tax increment financing district and the possible creation of a second such district directing the preparation of an amended and restated project plan and the appointment of a review committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioned Members, this is a follow-up item. You might recall on your July 17th commission meeting, you approved a contract with the Center for Economic Development Law, which kinda unofficially kicked off the process of taking a look at our downtown improvement district. This action tonight, by approving this resolution, this will kick off the official review process, which includes the establishment of a review committee. And so this resolution identifies the mayor as the one for the city serving on that committee. And then it notes the other review committee members will be, will be set forth by their respective entities. Those entities are all taxing jurisdictions plus the Shawnee Planning Commission. And so that includes Potawatomi County Pioneer Library System, Potawatomi County Health Department, Gordon Cooper Technology Center, and of course Shawnee Public Schools. So this resolution, again, does not, does nothing else except just set the stage for this process, officially kicks off the review committee. Right now, based on the calendar that we have with the consultant, we are looking at wrapping this entire process up by your December 4 meeting. So the review committee will meet two to three times over the, between now and December 4 to do its work of reviewing the plans and the projects. And this will all be presented back to you for final consideration in November and December. Be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Questions?
Thank you.
Have we looked at what the, have we done a benefit cost analysis or even considered one being done on that? Has this, I mean, I hear what you're saying about this being a secondary district in that we're getting ready to set up a review committee, but I'm still hesitant over some of the same issues I'd stated before on this is, will this help us budgetarily and what impact will, could this potentially have?
Yeah. Really good question, Commissioner Shawnee. Appreciate the opportunity to answer it. I think that this will present, I think that the staff time and the expense with the consultant will be worth it. And the reason I feel that way is because if you look back at what's been done the previous 13 years, we actually collected about $700,000. So we believe our consultant expenses and staff time expenses will be probably $30,000 to $40,000 between now and December to get this approved. But then in perpetuity, or at least through the expiration of the TIP district, then we'll be accruing those benefits, accruing funds into that account. So a couple other points. One of the things that we're gonna look at is, that we will look at with this review committee is the extent of the district. And so obviously, we're looking at continuing the improvements on Kickapoo Street, south to Maine. And so we may be able to capture some of the redevelopment that occurs there. We've looked, there's other major improvements being done in downtown, such as the improvements at Shawnee Mill. So I believe that we can, we can capture significant funds relative to the cost of, for staff to administer this program and to keep it going. Lastly, I would add that the original TIP district expires after 15 years. State law actually allows you to go to 25. So we may be in a situation where we can extend our current one longer and/or establish a second district that would go out a full 25 years. And what that means is, you know, then all of a sudden, even though it may be many years down the road, that redevelopment along Kickapoo Street or other parts of downtown, we can actually capture and use. So I hope that answers your question.
Actually, it doesn't cost the city because we're talking about ad valorem taxes. So it costs the school and the county. So they're, they're involved, they have to agree to it. And the schools have to agree to it. And the way that's set up is any additional taxes or any improvements will go into the TIP district and the taxable economy. Stay safe or be at this level, what it is when it starts. I see you looking at that. Is that correct?
That's absolutely correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
I move we adopt.
Commissioner Harris, move we adopt.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gill.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A resolution declaring the intent to consider approval of an amendment to, to and restatement of the Shawnee Downtown Revitalization Project Plan, including amending increment District Number One and creating an additional tax increment district under the Local Development Act, directing preparation of an amended and restated project plan, appointing a review committee, directing the review committee to make findings as to eligibility and financial impact, if any, on taxing jurisdictions and business activities within the district, and directing the review committee to make a recommendation with respect to the proposed amended and restated project plan.
Thank you. Call a question. Motion carries seven oh. Item number 11. I am told that items 11, 12, 13, 14. Well, it renders 15 moot and 16 moot. There will be, in the interest of saving time, there will be a motion to defer those until the June general election.
How about this table on, that we want to put a date on?
What should we do?
Vice Mayor, if we table those, that they will, by requirement, show up on the next regular meeting's agenda, which I don't think alleviates the concern that is being addressed with passing those. I would suggest either referring them to a specific meeting or taking other action tonight so that they can be placed after the November special election viability.
Okay.
Do you have, is there a motion?
Do we do them all at once, or are you gonna need?
Do, do we do them all at once, or do you, or are you going to need five different, five different motions?
I'm going to upset everybody, but I would like each agenda.
Item number 11, is there a motion?
To defer that to a meeting appropriate to the June election, I don't know the date.
It will be sometime in March, I would think. Are there notice requirements?
Correct, and I don't know what that deadline is, I mean.
Why don't we, of course, we can do it early, too. Why don't, why don't just say the first meeting in March, March 5th?
So, a motion to defer to March 5th agenda?
Yes.
By Commissioner Rutherford?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hare, any discussion? Call a question? Motion carries seven zero. Item 12, same item.
I make the motion to defer to the March.
Commissioner Shaw, move, to move. Defer to March 5th meeting, second. By Commissioner Bisham, call a question? Motion carries seven oh. Item 13, is there a motion?
So moved.
Commissioner Shaw, second.
Second.
By Commissioner Hare, call a question?
Motion to defer to
Motion to defer to March 5th.
Okay, yes, we want to clarify that. The motion is to defer?
To March 5th.
Call a question. Motion carries seven oh. Item 14, their motion to defer to March 5th.
Motion to defer to March 5th, sorry.
Commissioner Shaw, second.
So moved, for March 5th.
Commissioner Gill, call a question. Motion carries seven oh. So, in terms of items 15 and 16, they're rendered moot, so do we take any action yet?
If we could just call them, announce no action, that would be preferable.
Item 15, considering ordinance calling for a special election for the filling of the unexpired term for Ward 6, we don't need a motion?
No.
Oh, I think you're right.
No action. Item 16, consider a resolution calling and providing for the holding of a special election in the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma, for the purpose of filling the unexpired term of Ward 6, providing for said election to be conducted by the Potawatomi County Election Board, and providing for voting by absentee ballot. There will be no action on that item. Brings us to item 17, status update on Interstate 40, Bryan Street interchange. I had asked that this item be placed on the, on the agenda. I've been asked by a number of people for months and months to please give an update, and, and I'm pleased to be able to, to give this update at this point. Shawnee historically has had about 25,000 residents. We had traditionally, going back many years, we had no extraordinary needs to pursue an aggressive growth strategy. It is true that economic development efforts in the late 60s and 70s solidified that population, and began to set the stage for modest growth. Shawnee continued to hover in that population range until the turn of the century. Hurts me to say the turn of the century, at my tender age. Both the Kickapoo and the Harrison exits have existed since inception, and this current saga began about four mayors ago, when Chuck Mills began to entertain the idea of requesting an additional exit off of I-40 onto Bryan Street. He met with ODOT, met with Phil Tomlinson, Commissioner Dan Overland, and to engage ODOT in order to perform a preliminary feasibility study. Fast forward a year and a half after the traffic analysis on I-40, as well as Harrison, indicated positive feasibility. During the course of my research, I learned that the original improvement of Bryan Street was made, at least in part, with the idea of relieving traffic on Harrison south of I-40. Linda Peterson, then mayor, held an open meeting to discuss the project. I was there personally, and recall that Truman Carter was then the principal objector, but the vast majority of comments were favorable. This was at Grove School. In a letter dated March 22nd, 2010, Sandra Massey, who is the Historic Preservation Officer of the Sac and Fox, voiced objection based on adverse effect of active tribal ceremonial sites. On April 16th, Gary Ridley, Secretary of the Transportation, requested of Chief Thurmond inquiring whether the Sac and Fox would have an interest in participating in any project which might come about. On April 27th, 2010, Chief Thurmond, in a letter to Don Sullivan, who is an ODOT engineer, that the project would have profound adverse impact on historical, cultural, and traditional practices and activities of the nation. On June 15th, 2010, Chief Thurmond formally expressed his objection on the part of the tribe to the project. It is also my understanding, although I do not have copies, that the tribe addressed their objections to the Federal Highway Traffic, Highway Administration, thereby assigning the project to an indefinite suspended status. I have, in my possession, letters of support from the United Kewa Band of the Cherokee, and a collation in support of the Sac and Fox objections. Chief Rhodes assumed her duties approximately at the same time as I did. During the last part of Wes Maynard's term, city approached her, during, who was the new chief, during the intervening months to request reconsideration of the tribal position. There was a meeting August 31st, 2016, to discuss the proposed exit. That meeting was at the Votex, and I was not present, but I am told that Mr. Carter expressed his desire to move the exit to Brangus Road. Should be noted that existing traffic studies do not support an exit on Brangus, Leo, or Ackman. It is my understanding that the proposed improvements do not intrude on any tribal plans. ODOT has presently allocated $1.3 million of funding to the next step in the study, and it should be noted that this next step, as we have expressed to the tribe, is merely a step in the process, and the final determination would depend on the concurrence of the tribe and the successful completion of the feasibility engineering study by the Oklahoma Department of Transportation. We were recently successful in arranging a meeting with the Business Committee, who I am told has the final sub. That meeting was cordial, involved an open exchange of ideas. It was strongly noted that the withdrawal of the letter of objection merely allows further engineering to occur. It is in no way a final approval. After that meeting, we were told that we would have an answer to our request within two weeks. There is an eight-year plan update by the Oklahoma Department of Transportation on September 10th. It is entirely possible that failing receipt of the permission letter from the Sac and Fox, that this project may not remain on the eight-year plan. If it does not, it is entirely through inaction of the Sac and Fox that it will fail this threshold test. Brings me to our reasoning as to why the project is, is, in my opinion, of such vital interest to Shawnee. My interest is solely on the grounds of economic development. We, we survive at the city exclusively on sales tax. We estimate that approximately 70% of our sales tax receipts come from north of MacArthur Street. So it's fairly obvious, when you look at our numbers, where our revenue comes from. If we're going to expand, it makes only sense that we're going to expand to the north. This exit, in, to me, represents low-hanging fruit. If you think of miles of corridor of economic development, it, it's possible that this would open up two or three miles, when you consider up and back of economic development, both down Bryan Street to the south of Interstate 40, down 45th Street to the west to Harrison, between 45th Street and Union as well, and on down 45th Street to Kickapoo. That, that potentially represents huge numbers of sales tax receipts to the city, not to mention what it might open up from the north side. That is the purpose for my thrust, and I think that kind of brings, brings everybody up to date on where we are. We have to date not received the letter. I talked to Senator Sharp through message exchanges today. He has not received the letter, so that's where we are. They have a tribal election on, I believe, the 26th of this month, and a couple of members, at least of the Business Committee, are, are in a runoff to retain their position. So, that's where we are. We don't know the status. We've been told that, that the chief had the votes to withdraw the objection. That has not happened. I'm not receiving the letter. ODOT's not, not receiving the letter, and, and Commissioner, and Senator Sharp is not receiving the letter. So, that's my update. I noticed that Commissioner Overland is here. Dan, is there anything that I've left out that you would like to point out?
The only thing I would say, Commissioner, Commissioners and Mayor, is that I know that for the last 10 years, this project has been somewhat of a focus of the Department, of state focus on it. The city has as well. I know during the meetings, lots of meetings have been had with the Sac and Fox Nation. A number of you Commissioners have been in attendance to one or many of the meetings. We continue to feel optimistic that some letter will be received, and the next step in trying to bring a, an interchange that will promote safety in Shawnee would be hopeful. But I can tell you that if we don't receive a letter that retracts the objection, it will be difficult, if not impossible, to keep focusing on it each year of the eight-year plan, as it, as it evolves. New mayor, uh, new governor will be elected in two years, and a new Commissioner may be appointed to my seat, and could be from Norman, or Tishomingo, or many places else in my district. So, the window of opportunity for us to continue to be focused on this remains high within the department, but another Commissioner that comes along may not have the, the attitude that I do. Thank you, Mayor.
It, it's been asserted that these funds are portable, in that they could be shifted to another project of our, of our choosing. That is absolutely incorrect. It also has been asserted that this project is on hold because of some inaction, based on, on this city commission, or previous city commissions. That is also not true. So, that's the extent of my update.
Okay, I guess here is where we're going to have some differences, Mayor. One, I heard you say that you met with the Business Committee of the Sac and Fox Nation, and when you have a couple of individuals that show up, it would be kind of like us, if there was only two or three of us that showed up, which was the case, and of course, we'd never authorized or approved any type of meeting with the Sac and Fox Nation that I'm aware of, so.
Well, there was Resolution Number 6380, adopted in, on the first day of March of 2010, by the City Commission.
Oh, I have that.
Endorsing the project. So it has been endorsed. I, I'm the one that did not invite you to the meeting, and if there's someone that you need to jump on about it, then it's me. I didn't invite you intentionally, because I felt like I knew your opposition to the project, and I felt like you would poison the well.
Well, I certainly appreciate that.
While we're on the subject, I think your comments to Justin at the last meeting were totally inappropriate, in terms of, we evaluate the actions of personnel in executive session, and
And I had a cause of action for that, and I don't appreciate your comments here.
No, ma'am, you didn't. We evaluated Mr. Erickson.
If I poison the well, that's because it's from a tribal perspective.
We evaluated Mr.
You aren't considering several factors here, Mayor. One is the Executive Order 13007, which is Indian sacred sites. Another is the Religious Freedom Restoration Act of 1993.
I didn't say anything about what their causes were. All I've done is simply state
You're pressuring your tribe, and saying that it's a lack of their commitment, but it's their people that's making this decision.
And they, and they're entitled to make this decision, and, and our, the people that we represent are entitled to know.
Then allow them to make it without your judgment.
Their, my, my job is to pursue what's beneficial to the city of Shawnee, and so is yours.
And that's what I'm doing, because that could easily lead to litigation.
We'll leave that for others to decide. Fact of the matter is, we did Justin Erickson's evaluation. Everybody on this commission received a form. Everyone completed it, except you. You forfeited your right to do that evaluation.
And that was only because I was ill that day. And this isn't about his evaluation. This was about me requesting to be given certain information.
Your comments were of a personal nature and job-related, and they were out of order. Item 18, acknowledge the sales tax report.
I'll be brief, but I also wanted to say, in the September meeting, you will have a complete, all the numbers that are based on our year-end, at 6:30 on an accrual basis, I'm working on that now. But our August sales tax was $1,559,000, and we were up just $29,000, or 1.26%, so. Use tax was up, but for the two months so far this year, we are meeting budget, but not much more.
It's better than some of the folks.
I'll take it. The next meeting, maybe not the next meeting, but the second meeting in September, you'll have a complete history of the top sales categories for the year.
Thank you.
And Cindy, how's that Amazon tax doing for us?
It's, it's been doing about what I thought about, 25, 35, 25 to 30,000 a month.
Great.
It'll be interesting to see the holidays.
All right, thanks.
Item 19, administrative report.
Yes, sir, we've got one tonight.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. I just wanted to give you a quick update on the 2017 Edward Burns Memorial Grant. It was open for local law enforcement. We were allocated $20,979. It is mandated that we share this grant. We have shared this grant with the Potawatomi County Sheriff's Office for the past 10 years, and Shawnee Police Department will receive $10,500 of this grant money. Potawatomi County Sheriff's Office will receive $10,479 of this grant money. And we're actually looking at this money right now, looking at some all-electric motorcycles for traffic enforcement, which, having said that, this Friday at 10:00 a.m., anyone who would like to see the demonstration of those in our parking lot, they will be here with two, two fully loaded police package motorcycles at 10:00 a.m. Friday, and the Commissioners and staff are welcome to come take a look. And I'd like to put a plug in this Saturday for Cops and Kids. After you come from Blue Zones, come over to Cops and Kids, 1 to 4. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Cops and Kids is a really good deal, if y'all are not familiar with, you need to get that way. Justin, do you not have a report?
No, sir.
Is there any new business?
No, sir, no new business.
Commissioner comments?
I would just like to express that we had lost one of a former Commissioner and former mayor last week, and it was fitting that we got some of this rodeo stuff. This was his big, he really loved it. It was Jerry O'Sreney, passed away last week, and he made it to every one of them, with the exception of the 25th. His health prevented him from doing that. But I just wanted to give a shout-out about, for Jerry.
It's simply it's good to be back.
Good to have you back, Mayor. The, the comment I'd make is, we do appreciate the Commissioners, all of his help and all his work here in Shawnee, and I, for one, have our, I'm totally settled on the I-40 Bryan Street exit, and will do anything I can to help the mayor, anybody, to help you on that project. So I'm committed to that project, and I'd sure like to see it completed.
Mason got my, got my thunder while he was up here. Blue Zone, Saturday morning, Cops and Kids, Saturday afternoon. Hopefully everyone can, can make that. The, the Bryan Street exit, I just, that's, that's so vital, I think, to the city of Shawnee and, and our growth, and I hope the Sac and Fox Nation, their, their administration and the people of the Sac and Fox Nation can, can all get together, and get together with the city and ODOT, and the county, and figure out how to make this work. I think the, the meeting that happened a few weeks ago seemed very positive, and I just, I hope the Sac and Fox people can, can all talk, and we can, we can make it a great thing for everyone involved.
Thank you. Commissioner Shaw?
First, I have a question for Justin. Justin, earlier, when we were talking about the Bertha, and a young commission chambers, well, we have signage here on
Yes, Mayor, I don't know. Yes, Mayor, hopefully within two weeks. If not, it'll be at your, maybe your second meeting. The chamber will display a sign that designates this Commission Chambers as such, and will probably also frame a resolution as well. So, those here twenty years from now can learn about Bertha Ann and who she was and what she meant to the city.
Great. Thank you. I noticed there's a number of work progressing on projects throughout Shawnee, Tim. I have noticed that, and I do appreciate your reports. I'd also like to recognize Don Lynch for his lifetime achievement that he recently got from the Oklahoma Emergency Management Association. Well done. And then, Mayor, you know, I'm not at war here with you. I really don't want to be, but when it comes to tribal issues, you just aren't the person who understands them. So, from that perspective, I would just like to educate you on two things. The Sac and Fox, it is their decision and their right to make decisions, and let's allow them to do that. It's my understanding this last week that their Business Committee did meet, Justin, that they did decide that they, that it would not, at this point in time, be in their best interest. They have asked for that to, the chief did ask for it, to come back up again. They are going to revisit that issue again and make a decision on it. And based on whatever they decide, that's their decision, not mine. I did ask just that, you include me in meetings, so I appreciate that. And Mayor, that's what I asked for, and that's what I'm still asking for. So, having said that, thank you.
I'm very happy that we named the Commission Chamber Bertha Ann Young Chamber. She and I go back many, 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 many years when I was a soap jerk, right straight across the street here at my dad's drugstore, and a lot of city employees would come over there and get five cent ice cream cones and five cent cokes, back in the fifties. And so, I think it's an honor.
Thank you. My purpose for inviting Commissioner Rutherford to the meeting was precisely because I am not well-versed in Indian matters, and he is a member of the Potawatomi Tribe. As such, he is versed in those items. This meeting is adjourned. We will call the meeting to order of the Shawnee Airport Authority. We have a quorum. Item one, consider approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Harrod.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Rutherford. Call of question? Motion carries seven oh. Item two, discussion and consideration of approving a new lease between Shawnee Airport Authority and Wesley Elliott, DBA Oklahoma Air LLC. Keenan?
Hello, Mayor. Good evening, Commissioners. Real quick, if I might, while I'm up here, I just want to plug the airshow before I start on this agenda item. It's October seventh this year. It's always the first weekend of Saturday, but it lands on October seventh. Start, that is a Saturday. It starts at eight a.m., and the show this year is going to start a little bit earlier. It's going to start at eleven as opposed to twelve last year. And the reason for that is OBU, every other year, OBU has a home game the same day as we have our airshow, and so their game starts at one o'clock. So, we're going to try to get everybody in, get the airshow started, get it over with, and so people can go. And then also, I made, the reason for doing it a little early is we have to close MacArthur Street. Yes, MacArthur, between Leo and Airport Drive during the airshow, which will be from eleven to about twelve-thirty. And so, that is a little inconvenient for the visitors to the OBU game, so for those out there, just make a different route on that day, so.
Is this planes, trains, and automobiles?
Yeah, oh, yes. Same as last year, trains, planes, and automobiles. We're eight to two. The depot, I believe, starts at twelve or one o'clock. Don't quote me on that. And of course, the auto is the Knights Auto Club. That's going to be at both events, so it should be a good day, as long as the weather holds up. The lease agreement tonight is between the Airport Authority and Oklahoma Air LLC. Oklahoma Air LLC is a newly formed LLC started by Wesley Elliott of McLeod, Oklahoma, and he's been a tenant of ours for over a year at this point. And currently, he wishes to open up a flight instruction operation out at the airport. He wants to do flight instruction. He wants to do aircraft rental, and he wants to do pilot services, meaning hold seminars and hold classes and that types of things for the aviation community around Shawnee. So, tonight, what we're voting on is a lease between the two parties. The lease does two things. It allows Mr. Elliott to lease the upstairs office that is directly above my office. It's the only upstairs at the terminal. This space hasn't been leased in a couple of years. Matter of fact, the last people who did was a flight school, so it's pretty convenient for that type of operation. And number two, it allows him to conduct the commercial activity, which I just talked about, the flight instruction and so on. The Airport Board did, does recommend approval. They did so at the October, excuse me, August sixteenth meeting. Staff recommends the approval, and if you look on your memo, there's some key aspects to the lease, and I can go over a few of them if you would like me to. But if not, I'll answer any questions or any...
Is this contingent upon his obtaining any credentials?
Yes, sir. What we're requiring of him is an insurance policy that meets the insurance requirements in Schedule A of the lease, and a registration certificate from the state of Oklahoma that does ensure that he is...
What about with the FAA?
With FAA. There's no FAA documentation necessary in this matter.
And staff recommendations to approve?
Yes, sir.
Are there any other questions?
Is there any liability concerns we need to consider there?
I don't believe so. I think combined with the insurance requirements that we're requiring of him, coupled with our existing policies, should be sufficient coverage.
Okay. Thank you.
Turn motion to approve the lease?
So moved.
Commissioner Shaw, second. Commissioner Harrod, call of question? Motion carries seven oh. Is there any new business?
No, sir, there's none.
This meeting is adjourned, and we call to order the Shawnee Municipal Authority. There is a quorum. Item number one, consider approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Gillum.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Bisham. Call of question? Motion carries seven oh. Is there any new business?
No, sir.
This meeting is adjourned, and this meeting is adjourned.